Evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 9, 2021, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a quick announcement. Tonight is Board Member Bill Bastian's last meeting with the Penfield Planning Board. He's resigning at the end of the year. He's going to be -- a lot of life changes coming up next couple of years, next year and the next few years. So we appreciate your 2021 years, probably, on the planning board. Thank you very much. Town of Penfield is better for your service, and thank you.
Thanks for the kind words, A.J.
Sure thing. I was going to say my wife made me say them, but that's not true. Came up with them all by myself. Lori, can we please read the roll?
Sure. Hetske.
Hetske here.
Bastian.
Bastian here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Kenauer.
Kenauer here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Dubrak.
Dubrak here.
Gray here.
All right. Doug, do you want to go through our table applications and action items?
I think we're going to start with the approval of the November 16 minutes.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. That's -- yes. We've got meeting minutes from November 16. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Tidings, second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Now Doug.
All right. Tabled application number one, 1801 and 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the Passstone Mixed Use Project. Staff has been in contact with the applicant and their engineer. They were hoping to have revised plans in in time to have the board review them at this meeting, but unfortunately, they didn't get them in in time. So at this point, no action is necessary by the board.
Okay.
Tabled application number two, 2745 Penfield Road, Highland Estates. Staff got revised plans here in November. They've been following up, or we've been following up with some comments. Unfortunately, we don't have any comments for the board at this point. Most of our review has been, it's been small technical items, revising erosion control layouts, some drainage corrections, and some spelling or title block corrections. Regarding the Type 1 action, we have been in contact with the applicant. They completed the archaeological survey. That has been submitted to SHPO for their consideration. We have requested that they forward a copy under the board for their review. But until we hear back from SHPO on their recommendations based on that survey, we suggest that the board consider tabling the application.
Okay. So Jim, you want to move to continue tabling until we move forward?
I'll second.
Moved by Burton, second by Kenauer.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. Tabled application number three, the arbors at Penfield Mixed Use. Staff just received revised plans earlier today, so we are slowly going through those, as well as we received responses to the board's tabling resolution and previous PRC memo. In addition, we have received feedback from the traffic consultant, town traffic consultant, regarding the TIS that was submitted, or TIS update that was submitted by the applicant. In addition, New York State DOT provided their comments on the TIS. It was sent to them for their review as well. The town is still going through reviewing those recommendations. They seem to be mostly in line with what was suggested within the TIS update by SRF, but we'll have more details on that for you in the coming weeks.
Okay.
If you do have any questions for the applicant, they are here in the audience tonight.
I know that we got some material in yesterday or today.
Today.
And what we'd like to do is review it and discuss it at the January meeting.
Okay. So in that case, would the board like to table it pending sufficient time to review the documents?
Yes. So moved.
I'll second.
Let's give this to Bill, for sure. It's his last meeting.
Was it Bob? Did Bob do the motion?
Yes.
Bob did the motion. Bill seconded.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. Then we have two action items. First one tonight is a lot combination, 1650 and 1670 Kennedy Road. 1650 Kennedy Road contains a single-family residence and is 21.6 acres. 1670 is currently vacant, is about 23 acres. They are owned by the same owner. They intend to combine the two lots into a single 44.7 acre parcel, and he intends at some point in the future to construct accessory structure on the property. Staff has reviewed the subdivision, and we don't have any concerns at this time.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with this?
No.
Somebody like to move to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Tidings, second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. Bear with me on this next one. So the next one we have is an administrative re-subdivision or lot line shift. So this one goes back to 2019. In April of 2019, the planning board reviewed a request for the administrative re-subdivision that created a landlocked parcel. At one point, the property owner at 2453, previous property owner at 2453, had purchased property from 2451 and deed merged it without coming through the board for approval. While they were doing that, they were undergoing foreclosure on the property, or the bank was foreclosing on the property, and there were some issues with the bank's foreclosure, and they required that the lot be recreated as the landlocked parcel that they had written the mortgage on. So the board approved that back in April of 2019, with the understanding that at some point in the future that they would be coming back once a new owner owned the property to create a flag lot and make it more compliant. So that is what they are proposing today. They're going to do a lot line shift between the cranes and the new owner of 2453 that will create a compliant flag lot that's 2.275 acres.
Okay. So it's really just the continuation or part two of what we acted on in 2019?
That's correct.
Anybody have any issues with this?
No.
No? Bill, you want to move it?
I'll move to approve.
You got a second?
I'll second.
Bastian and Kenauer.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Bastian.
Bastian, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. And then we have one new business item. Penfield Heights has requested to come back for an informal discussion before the board regarding their materials that they submitted to the board for their review regarding their previous application. They are here in the audience tonight if you'd like to bring them up for a presentation.
Okay.
Hello. Good evening. Rob Fornataro here with SWBR. Thanks very much for meeting with us.
I'm Bill Price with SWBR.
Yeah, you guys can -- yeah, good. Good, good, good. I just, I didn't know if you were going to sit in the back, and then I'd have to take mine up and -- okay.
You can go either way.
All right. Who's taking?
I'll start, I guess. Thanks very much for meeting with us, and we really appreciate it. Last month, we met with the PRC, and it was, I think, very positive. We met with you, A.J., and a number of members, and showed some progress that we made, and I think you guys were pretty reticent with all that, and we'd just like to sort of succinctly share that with you today, if you don't mind. So I think, Doug, this is the presentation we gave you on the board here?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I'll have Bill start off with this one item here. There's about four items on here, though, we wanted to talk through.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. What we did was, we took the letter that you guys had crafted, and we decided to take a look at the technical issues to resolve those the best we could first before we could determine if there was going to be any impact to density or building configurations. So what we did was, we started out with the fire access was one of our big issues. We had previously had that located behind Building F, the retail building on the south side of the controlled intersection. Digging deeper into the code, that couldn't be that close to the intersection. So we've located the fire access to the north of, which on the screen is to the right of Building B. We have a minor issue there. One is a, there's a utility pole there, so we have slid the Building B slightly so that we can get the fire lane in there. It will be controlled. There'll be a crash gate there or crash bollards, but that does satisfy the distance requirement from the signalized intersection. We are a few feet short of the technical interpretation of the code. We just don't own any property to the north of that. This is as far north as we can put that fire lane on our property. The lane itself is 20 feet wide per the code. The other fire access issues that we addressed were all of the travel lanes in front of Building D, which is our main north-south route. We have the travel lanes there are 13 feet, so we have a fire lane of 26 feet on both the west side of Building D, on the north side of Building D as well, where we have the parallel parking along the curb. And then as you turn back south from the common house, the lane in front of Building E, and then as you turn back again, kind of in a C shape in front of Building C, that's also 26 feet wide, and we've run the calculations so that we know that the fire trucks can do the backup move and then be able to drive out again. We have, on another drawing, we have made sure that all of our sidewalks and ADA routes on the site are compliant with your code. So we took a look at that. We also took a look at the stormwater management, and I believe we have a plan showing stormwater. Okay. This is a plan with our current building configuration, showing the areas where we'll have subsurface drainage storage, and then the, all of these will then daylight into the stormwater ponds on the east side of Building E. So we've added quite a bit of storage to address the Towns Code for the percent of reduction in runoff. If there are questions, I do have someone that knows a whole lot more about that than myself, Alex is here. The other issue that was brought up in our letter was the issue of the parking, and we did have SRF associates prepare a parking analysis, and I do believe there is a plan that we submitted with that. The charts and tables are on the right-hand side, and what we did was, we went through with David Cruzy and SRF and looked at all of our residential square footage, our retail and office square footage, and based the parking demand and availability on those uses. And it does show that we have an excess in, we're providing currently, an excess of parking storage, or parking, both enclosed and open surface. We're slightly over the requirement for our weekdays, and we're pretty well over on our weekend peaks. So we are providing, you know, the required amount of parking and a little bit more. Not going to say there's so much that it's going to get land-banked or just not built, I think, but if we did want to land-bank, we could look at areas to do that. So we did have those criteria to look at, and the last couple here really were the desire for additional retail and commercial in the project. What we did was, we did eliminate one building that was residential, that was Building A on our site plan. It was a 10-unit townhouse building. It was the mirror image of Building B, and we have changed that to a commercial retail building, possibly office. We took that, and that is 12,000 square feet. We did our calculations of the amount of non-residential and non-residential space in the project. That now comes to 17.2% of non-residential space, and in that, that does include us limiting the amount of space that we had previously calculated as part of non-residential in the common house. So the only square footage in the common house that was used was not the pool deck, was really just our gym and our common space in the building that is open to anybody, including our tenants as well, tenants who are residents, but tenants who are also work there as part of a business. So I think when you guys calculated it, you felt we were down around the 8% of actual, and using the same methodology, and the increase in square footage, we're at the 17.2%. Our open space ratio is above 20% on this, and I think there's, you know, the one thing I did want to talk about, I think, I'm not sure if we, in this package, we have a section showing through the parking lot that's behind Building A, the new commercial building, but we do know that the one thing that's kind of interesting about this now is that we are opening up visually a space to allow visual access into Building D, which has a good percentage of the commercial and office space on the ground floor. So now if you're out on 250, traveling either northbound or southbound, and you're, or you're across the street, or you're anywhere in this neighborhood, you're going to have visual access to the commercial and retail components of the project. When you look at the parking lot that's behind Building A, we set this down, I think if you'll recall, that there's about a five, five-and-a-half-foot grade change between the elevation of the road and our first intersection in the project. So we've taken advantage of that elevation change so that the, and use some retaining walls so that the parking lot behind Building A, you're actually looking over the vehicles.
From 250.
From 250, right.
Can I stop you?
Please, yeah.
We have five minutes before the public hearing, so.
All right. I will stop. I think I pointed out the major changes in site and in percentage of residential, non-residential, and I'm going to let Rob just quickly speak to our architecture.
Yeah, if you want to go to some of those 3D images, yeah, that's a good one, the one before that maybe. So as you remember, we heard it loud and clear, no, not a lot of white, you know, we didn't want to, we wanted more color, we wanted it more consistent with the design guidelines. So I think we've done a good job of being, you know, appropriate where it makes the most sense, and where it makes the most sense, we feel, is more in the commercial and retail, the mixed-use areas of this project. So if you go to the next.
This is, yeah, this is the original.
That's the old one, yeah, the original, and then this is the one where we've, definitely the two retail buildings will stand out and be more signature in texture and color, and I think just in form. They're both two stories now. I think before, we had one of those buildings as three stories. We wanted to drop that down a little bit. I think what you were mentioning, Bill, was that parking lot now that we've replaced with a retail building with Building A. Now you could look through that through 250 and see some of Building D, which I think is more successful, too, really helps illuminate some of that commercial or retail space, so we think that's positive as well. So I think we have a rendering, the next slide. Well, this is just showing, you know, as you really get down to this level and start to look at it, we built a lot of character to these buildings. They're not really flat facades. They do have a lot of nuances to them, and some of the textures, and we know this is very cartoony right now, the rendering style, but just wanted to show some of the three-dimensional to that, and, you know, that'll help the building character as well. So, yeah, this is another one as well, looking, Building D on the left-hand side there. And then the next image, so similar to what we had, I think, originally showed you, and you reacted favorably towards, I think we've sort of got back to that look and feel, and we're happy with it. We feel like this could be pretty successful and be that gateway to this destination here for us.
I have a question about that rendering right there. It looks terrific, but the coloring doesn't seem to be consistent with the other renderings. Could you tell the board which direction you're going in? Is it more like this or more like the other?
You mean the cartoony ones, or like these?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, color, it's tough to depict. When you start to get to the more hand-drawn, I think, you know, this material, there's a certain palette that's given to you, so we're trying to replicate something that's real, and there's only, you know, five or six colors in this certain material. So I'd say the rendering would be, it'd be a little more orange on the left and be a little more red on the right.
What about through there?
Yeah, so through there, the stone, and I had samples, and I'm sorry I didn't bring them today, but I know, A.J., you saw some of the real samples, but that's a cobblestone, so it's a variation of, you know, tans and pinks, that image right there in the back, yeah. And so the bridge itself will be, and I showed that as well, it's like a weathered gray wood, like an old antique wood, and then the steel would be more like a colored, like a ruddy brown or something.
Like a Corten?
Well, it wouldn't be Corten, but simulate that, yeah, exactly. That would be the idea. And then the roofs are like a standing seam, like a gray.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't mean to rush.
One more item, please. Okay, the height thing, I really want to get to that, if you don't mind. So basically, just real quickly, the only thing that violates the 55 feet here, that we had a lot of it that was violating that 55-foot code requirement, is that it's not this one, it's actually, because we brought all the roofs down, it's the corner, that stone one that we just saw in the rendering, on both sides. So the one side, it would be 71 feet on the back side, on the east side, but on the west side, you could see up in the upper, right there, it is 60 feet. And from 250, actually, though, it steps down eight feet. So if you were to measure it from 250, it's really lower than the 55 feet, but we just think it really adds character to this, and we don't want the same roof types. And if we lowered this to 55, you know, we thought if there was one place that might violate that, this seems like a most appropriate one to really add the character of this.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's it.
Okay. We've got maybe 30 seconds or so. Betsy, do you have any?
Well, I, I mean, if you have any questions, you know, I think we tried to, you know, approach all the issues that have been raised in a practical, you know, thorough kind of way. So I don't know if you want to, you know, we don't really have time to go into the nuances and details, certainly, if you have any questions for us. I think what we'd like to do is know whether we're on track to be able to move forward and submit, and we don't actually have an application pending currently.
Right. Right. I think, would it be accurate in saying that we feel you're definitely moving in the right direction? Does everybody feel that way?
Yeah.
So, yeah, thank you. Definitely getting much closer, so.
Great. So I think our next step would be then to get in touch with Doug and move forward in the application.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
We're super close to being on time.
One minute.
Missed that.
So we can, we'll move into the public hearing portion of the meeting tonight. Just some housekeeping, order of process and how we do our public hearings in Penfield. Applicant will be invited to come up to the table here to give your presentation, and then the board will ask questions. Once board members have asked their questions, we'll open it up to public input, which is one of the big reasons why we want to have open public hearings, seeking input from the public, and you can make comments both in person here at Town Hall during the meeting, or you can call 340-8771. And you can also access the Penfield website, which is www.penfield.org. There should be a link to this meeting at the bottom, and way for you to submit a comment electronically, and I will be monitoring comments as they come in. And also, if you call in, Command Central downstairs will take your call, put you in the queue, and they will also put that up on the screen, so we welcome your comments. And Doug, do you want to read our, tonight's application?
Yes. Application number one, McMahon Leroux Associates, PC, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Eric Gioka, Gioka Homes LLC, requests under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2, and Article 12-12.2 of the Code of Town of Penfield, for preliminary and final subdivision and site plan approval for proposed two-lot subdivision with associated site improvements on 36.3833 acres located at 35 Apollonia Lane, Fairport, New York, 14450. The properties are now or formerly owned by Arnold de Petro and Zoned Rural Agricultural, RA2. Application number 21P-0033, SBL number 126.01-1-52. Application number 21P-0033, SBL number 126.01-1-52.
Good evening. I'm Eric Gioka from Gioka Homes.
Al Larrue, McMahon-Larrue Associates. What we're looking to do is to create two town-standard lots that comply with zoning. There will be, this would be a three-lot subdivision, the two new lots, AR9C-3 and AR9C-2, and the remaining lands of Arnold de Petro. The perks have been done, the septic systems have, the perks have been approved by the Health Department. There's, we've given you complete plans, there's no pumps involved in connection to the sewer. There may be some, we're now getting some architecturals in for the two lots. So there may be some minor changes before we submit for signatures. But basically, the lots are compliant and will be compliant. We don't, we're not asking for any variances. So with that, I'll turn it over to any questions you might have.
Okay. Terry, you want to?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. You received some comments from the town about the PRC?
That I don't know whether we have or not.
We sent them out on November 18th.
Could be, Doug.
So we're kind of like waiting for the responses, I think.
Do you have a?
I don't know if I have a copy of it here, but we could bring it up on screen if that's...
Looks like minor comments.
Two of them were rather substantial comments. One of them, I'll let our town, our assistant engineer go through, it's regarding stormwater. The other one was relating to the previous application back in 2019. One of the conditions for approval back in 2019 was to repair and top the road. Apollonia Lane has been binder for just under 20 years. And the road, along with the gutters, needed some repair. That was a condition for the four-lot subdivision that the planning board approved back in 2019, and that is something that still hasn't been rectified. So we want to make sure that as part of this application, that that is taken care of.
We agree with that.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. At the time of the subdivision of the five lots, from the original larger parcel, there had been a $7,000 bond that was in existence to top the road from, I don't know, almost 20 years ago. At that time, the board asked, as a condition of the subdivision, for that to be increased to, I believe, $45,000 so that, and I believe it's in the form of a letter of credit. Arnold's not here tonight, but I did, I knew this was going to be a question. So, you know, that was, that letter of credit is in the town's possession, and at that time, that was deemed sufficient to complete the work. With what is going on now, which is, if you haven't been through the development, we're under construction on three housing sites right now. We have three houses going up, just like any other development, you know, kind of the goal is to get a bunch of houses up and then top coat it at the end, and not top coat it now, you know, during construction, because we don't want to coat it and ruin it. So that's kind of the plan. A bond was posted, or a letter of credit was implemented as a condition of the original subdivision. I don't remember if that was one or two years ago, it was pretty recently. So that should be, I would imagine, this subdivision doesn't change the work that needs to be done on the road.
No, we just want to ensure that that work eventually happens.
Yeah.
So we'll continue to do that.
Check into that, and then give them time, or maybe send another letter to them with our concerns. Do they get a time to review it and answer any other changes necessary?
Yeah, we can do that.
What does it mean by the overall project cannot be segmented?
So this subdivision was approved back 20 years ago, and there was probably no stormwater regulations. But since then, there is new stormwater regulations. And the fact of anything that's over five lots needs to have a stormwater facility. So with this being, you know, you can't be segmented. You did five lots before, now you're doing another two lots, so now we're up to seven lots. So Mark's comment was that stormwater pond should be implemented for regulations of the DEC.
But that's a good point. I mean, if you've got any more questions, once you look over the correspondence here, sorry for the breakdown of communication, but answer those concerns and either contact one of the staff. I'm sure we can, you know, come to some type of agreement anyways.
Yeah, like with any other development, it's not unusual for us to address engineering comments, you know, so it's easy enough to do. You know, we certainly take all that into consideration and would address those comments with a subdivision. So approval tonight just moves it along and along that way, and it doesn't affect our ability to answer those questions, and we will answer those questions. And we will provide the materials necessary to, for the staff, as we have with all the other projects we've ever worked on. So nothing unusual.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Bob, any?
Covered.
Jim?
Okay. So what we're going to do is open it up to any public comments at the moment. And I don't see any callers calling in, and I also do not see any written submitted comments electronically, just so that the folks out there in, what, Webland or TV World or whatever we call it, it's 585-340-8771 if you want to call in and make a comment about this application, or you can submit something in writing on the town's website. As I do not see any comments at the moment.
Give the folks some time, I do have a question.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this? Don't see anybody that wants to comment. So any final?
Nope, I'm good.
Words from staff, board?
Doug's got some. I have a comment. Some of the comments that we made in the PRC memo, just as long as we have it open, we've been discussing it. Is there a reason that the lot lines for these two lots were not extended all the way to the easterly property line, like they were in the original preliminary lap done in 2000?
Yeah, the owner wanted to preserve that land for himself, and it's in a conservation restriction, so he just wanted to conserve that land. He didn't want to turn it over. He uses it, walks on it.
Okay.
You know, that's pretty much all, the only reason.
Okay. All right. So we will call this hearing closed. Thanks, everyone, for coming. With this application, I think that we're still, we need to get some, a few responses in writing before we can put together an approval resolution for you. So tonight, we'll be tabling it, and hopefully we can get those responses in in the next, between now and January, and we can act on it in January.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to table at this time.
I'll second.
Hetzke, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Do you have any other business?
No, that's all I had for you guys tonight.
All right. Well, Bill, it's been nice knowing you. Hopefully we see you around town for a while longer.
A few more months.
Thanks again.
Feel to stop in, time to stop.
Been a pretty wild ride. And thanks again for your service. Appreciate it very much. It's been great working with you. And with that, we will adjourn and call the meeting closed. Thanks, everybody, and have a great holiday.